Hear your deliberations, hear your thoughts. Make sure any questions or concerns that you have get raised and get in front of the architects. The timetable will be, we hope in the next two or three weeks, that we'll be making a decision as to the two or three sites that we're going to push forward and ask for further detail. But we want to make sure that all the issues you might have are out on the table and that we get a chance to hear what they are going to be. So really, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Alan at this point for the school committee's discussion.
So on behalf of the Falmouth Public Schools, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you could, everybody could be here. I don't want to make an assumption that everybody knows everybody, even though we have name tags in front of us, so maybe we could go around and introduce ourselves and just let everybody know where we're from. Heather, could you start us?
Sure. I'm Heather Harper, I'm the Assistant Town Manager, I'm from Falmouth.
Julian Susso, Falmouth Town Manager.
Doug Jones, Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Sue Moran, Vice Chair.
Rebecca Moffett, Selectmen.
Sam Patterson, Selectmen.
Mary Pat Flynn, Selectmen.
Joel Clancy, Site Selection Committee.
Brenda Swain, Site Selection Committee and Vice Chair of the Council on Aging.
Jill Bishop, Director of the Council on Aging, Senior Center.
I'm Jim Vera, I'm the Chairman of the Council on Aging.
Judy Fenwick, School Committee.
Melissa Keith, School Committee, I'm from here.
Kelly Welch, School Committee.
Susan Augusta, School Committee, and so am I.
Alan Jacobs, Chair of the School Committee, and I've been here so long that I consider I'm from here too.
Nancy Taylor, Interim Superintendent to the Falmouth Public Schools.
Terry Madira, School Committee, and I knew Sue Augustin High School.
Walter Carney, School Committee.
John Fenari, I'm a washer shore, but I'm proudly from Falmouth.
And Pat Murphy, Director of Finance and Sales.
Great. Before we start, Heather, I know you've been shepherding this through. Is there anything that you want to add to what you're looking for out of this meeting?
This really is the role of the two chairmen to have a conversation. We're facilitating a contract that the board asked that the town engage and directed the town manager to facilitate a deep study of several sites that were selected by the Site Feasibility Working Group, which was appointed by the board over a year ago, and Jim Vera will tell us a little bit more about that. In terms of where we are with regard to the contract is very early. There are multiple workshops planned. The first phase was an overview, and you'll hear a little bit more about this from Joel. The next phase is a deeper dive into hopefully a smaller number of sites, narrowing it before to a smaller number, getting into significantly more detail about each of the sites. And I know, I can speak for the board, that they're really interested in making sure that they know all the concerns of the school department before they, and the school committee, before they move forward in recommending sites for a much deeper study.
Thank you. Jim, Jill, anything you guys want to add?
I do. As I said, I'm Jim Vera, and I chair the Council on Aging, and I also chaired the working group for site selection. Really, the Senior Center process has been going on for some time. We had a previous effort in about 2005 to 2007, I just saw the final document actually she had, for a previous effort for a Senior Center. And for some different reasons, that one didn't go forward, and then the momentum was lost. You know, we had a recession, town had other priorities, namely water and wastewater, and the whole effort kind of fizzled out. And then about three years ago, we started to get legs again. We have a new Senior Center Director, Jill Bishop, and we got some new people on the Council on Aging with some new viewpoint and some fresh enthusiasm, so we started the whole process over. And we all knew that we needed a new Senior Center. I think anybody who has been in the Senior Center realizes that. But we also knew that there was a process that we needed to go through. And the first step in that process was to have a needs assessment. So we were able to get the Gerontology Institute at UMass Boston to provide us with a needs assessment, and we did funding through the friends of the Falmouth Senior Center. And what the folks did at UMass Boston was they put together with our input, a survey and a questionnaire, sent that out to multiple people. It was available online and in handout form for anybody who wanted to participate. They did multiple interviews with community leaders and municipal leaders. We had a couple of public forums, and a lot of really good feedback about what the community needs in the way of a Senior Center. They put together that. That was done during the summer, spring and summer of 2013. And in January 2014, they submitted the final report to the Board of Selectmen, and that was the completion really of the first step, and that really kind of got us going. The Selectmen at that time put together a working group of people to review sites. Our charge was to look at anything and everything in Falmouth, both public land and privately owned land, buildings, vacant sites, whatever came across our table. The committee really looked at, we looked at over 50 sites in Falmouth. We put together a evaluation chart, and so each site was discussed, many of them multiple times over several month period. We did site visits, we did our evaluations, and at the end of that process, we came up, we had seven sites to present to the Selectmen, and we had three preferred sites, which we did. And after discussions with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager, we decided to do a public forum to show all seven sites to the community and get their input, and we did That was in the spring of 2014. So subsequent to that, Town Meeting approved the funding for the feasibility study, which is what's going on now, which is what we're going to be talking about tonight. And an RFP was issued for the feasibility study, and the Town Manager put together a review team to look at the proposals that we received from an RFP. And at that time, it was unanimous decision of that working group, that review team, to select BHNA of Boston as our consultant to do the feasibility study, and that's Joel Barmann that's here tonight to do that. So at the Town Meeting in, just trying to keep my date straight here because it's been going on for quite a while. At the November Town Meeting, the, just before the November Town Meeting, the Board of Selectmen decided to put four sites into the feasibility study. The four sites are the area of the Gus Canty Rec Building on Main Street, the site of PAL, which is right over here on Brookhill Road, which backs up to land that the town owns that has the dog park on it, the school administration building and the site that goes along with it, and all of this parcel here at the high school. So those were the four charges that were given to the consultant to take an in-depth look at at that time. So you can see that this has really been a really deliberate process. We've been doing this now for a few years, and you know, we've brought the community in at many different opportunities to have their input. And we also have, at different points during the course of this, communications with the school superintendent and the senior staff, Susan, and now Alan. On a few different occasions, either the Board of Selectmen or the Town Manager, or myself and Jill, or all of us together, have been able to meet and let you folks know through the staff and the chairman, you know, what we're doing and how it's going, and where, give you an idea of where we're going. But we haven't had an opportunity to really meet with the entire school committee yet, and we're absolutely delighted that we're able to do that tonight. And I think that kind of gives you a feel for what we've been through and where we're going. And I don't know if there's, if we want to go right over and have Joel start his presentation, or Heather wants to add a couple of things?
Yeah, I want to add a couple of things. One, and Jim did a great job going through the history, and it is obvious that we've been at this for really the better part of a decade. And one of the things that makes this a timely project is that we've sort of rolled out of the water wastewater projects, and this project now fits within our capital plan. It's a planned project, it's on the horizon, it makes sense physically to move forward in the next year or two on this project. So it's timely in terms of the community decision making. And one of the key goals, not just the feasibility of every site, but the public outreach process that we've gone through there, those that have criticized us for bringing the same material back to them over and over again. But I know that it's our goal that by the time we do get before Town Meeting, there's been enough community involvement in every decision, that it's a decision that Town Meeting can feel comfortable with, and then of course, the ballot vote would be necessary after that. So this is all part of the planning and community outreach. And I want to recognize Joel Barmann from DH Plus A who's here, and I'll turn it over in one second to him. One of the reasons we really liked Joel's proposal when we were looking at the consultants is he's had a tremendous amount of experience with Senior Centers and with Senior Center sites that haven't worked. So he's been through the site that everyone has identified as the most enthusiastic community behind it, and for some reason, it didn't work, and the communities have had to, you know, regather and take a look at options. And so we know that there's no perfect site out there, they all have challenges, they all require compromises in planning, but we're really comfortable with the work that Joel's done in many communities, helping communities with the decision making process, and so we're really, really delighted to have him here today, talking with us. And hopefully, some of you had an opportunity to see the, or attend the workshops a couple of weeks ago. He'll will give now just an abridged, maybe 20-minute version of the assessment of the four areas we've looked at, and so I'll turn it over to Joel, thank you.
Great, thanks. So I know a lot of you have seen this, so it's, we'll go through the same sites, but I took out a few of the slides, and we'll go a little quicker. As was mentioned, the four sites start up here on Brookhill Road with the high school, and then migrate sort of south. So the two phases of what we're trying to do is, the first phase was to look at these four sites that we were given and try to whittle it down to two that we could take a very detailed analysis of. So this first pass has been looking at it with civil engineers and traffic planners and coming up with a program and looking at them to see if they can work or not. And then the next phase, when we see which are the finalists, we'll see how well they can work compared to each other. So as I mentioned, it's not just our firm, there's been a preliminary traffic analysis, it's important to establish how many parking spaces are needed, whether the sites can accommodate that level of parking. The wastewater treatment, coastal engineering has been involved in that, and the utility studies for each site. And then we'll keep going deeper and deeper into that. There are about 35 factors that we've put into an analysis and ranked each site against these factors. Some have to do with, you know, easements and restrictions, and you'll see how important that is. Some have to do with access and whether you make a left turn in easily and left turns out, which is a big concern of some of the senior drivers. So there are a lot of factors that go into it, and then there are cost issues that come with the site. So one site may, for example, Brookhill Road doesn't have a sewer system connection, so it's going to need more site infrastructure to create a wastewater treatment system on that site than some of the other sites are. So we go through and look at each site from a cost detail as well as the program detail. There are a couple of parameters. The building's in the order of 15,000 to 20,000. Will it be one phase or two phase? 20,000 is the, is a comparable size that communities of Falmouth's population size have at one end of the Senior Center spectrum. And we're looking at it, is it a one-story or a two-story building, because there are advantages both ways. You want to be able to expand in the future. Parking, I mentioned, not all the sites need the same amount of parking. If you're Gus Canty, there's already a fair amount of parking there. But we've tried to be diligent about, we know parking is a hot issue, so we've been really diligent about taking the upper end of the parking on each one of the sites. Okay, so just walk you quickly through. Brookhill Road is the PAL site, and here's Brookhill Road, and that's the Police Athletic Building. That site itself, whoops, that site itself is extremely small, it's just over an acre. The building at 20,000 square feet on one level is half an acre, and if you put 150 spaces around a half-acre building, you need a lot more area than that 1.8 acres that is approximately the PAL site. So you really need to take a larger site, which is difficult, because this site here at the rear of the PAL site is a residential site, it would have to be acquired, and then you would still have to dip into this land, which this happens to be Town of Falmouth land. Here's the dog park, but there's a deed restriction on this, that it has to be used for recreation purposes, so you're not really allowed to build on that. Or if you wanted to build on that, you would have to find equal land somewhere else to trade for what you took away from this. That's a very long process. To build on land that has a deed restriction because it was required with certain recreation grants requires an act of the legislature, so it's at least a two-year period to get through that process. And there's no telling, you know, if this land is available, that separates the two pieces. There are many obstacles, as I mentioned, there's no sewer on this site, there are a number of issues there, and this very quickly became a site that was deemed to be not feasible. T-Ticket.
Joel, are you open to questions during this, or?
Sure.
I'm curious about the viability of the site. I thought I read in the paper that it's going to become substance abuse.
It is, it is.
The PAL building is.
Okay, and is that a lease situation, or have they purchased the building?
It's a lease.
Oh, okay. So it's still available for sale if it was the perfect.
Conceivably, yes.
Thank you.
So T-Ticket site is the school administration building, and so now it's clear sort of why we need some input from the school committee. We haven't really met in depth. I've communicated with the principal of the high school and some folks about this site, and met with the finance director and that, but we haven't dug deep into these options because we're trying to learn about them a little bit upfront. The school administration building's bounded by Sandwich Road and T-Ticket Highway, obviously. It's interesting, the sewer project is coming up to this point, so actually, this site could be connected to the sewer project that's in the works. There's a softball field here in the back, parking lot, that's the site boundary. We looked at it a couple ways. One is, could you put a building on, you know, T-Ticket Highway side where folks would come in, have a parking lot, the road, the building would front onto the road. The yellow is a two-story building, a one-story building is a dashed line, so it shows that you could get a one or two-story building on the site. It shows you can get 150 cars on the site. It has an exit or an entry on the Sandwich Road, which is a really nice feature. This particular scheme allows the school administration to sort of stay as is if you wanted to do that. So it is a workable site. We looked at the same idea, putting the building on the other side of the site, and how that would appeal to folks at the community forum. And then we looked at, is there a way to renovate the existing building, which has some interest, because as a school building, it's, the classroom components are not that dissimilar to some of the program rooms that are required in the Senior Center. So it is feasible to adapt a school building to this type of a program. You would have to do some sort of an addition, because there's a large multipurpose room that's about 3,000 square feet, that handles all sorts of different programs, that really could not be gotten out of the existing building. You'd want to make the building handicapped accessible. As you know, this is a split-level building, you come in sort of halfway between the upper level and the lower level, so this addition would mitigate the levels and make it accessible for those who are disabled to get through the building. You get 150 cars, this parking lot would be gone, so now you'd have a very nice green space at that juncture where the road wises out. So it's a workable site. Some of the, just the key things from the public comment were traffic, 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 people really concerned about traffic on T-Ticket Highway in the, particularly, you know, in the summer, but also in the afternoons and times that folks would be entering or leaving this. And even Sandwich Road gets quite busy, and then you get into this confluence down here where a lot of the seniors that were participating in the previous forum were concerned about this traffic at that intersection. And then another group, quite a few people raised their concerns about renovating that building and whether that can be done. So, you know, I think the answer to that is, Falmouth has a beautiful public library that's a renovated building, and in the right hands, I think you can renovate what is a historic building and quite a nice piece of property. Gus Canty is a really interesting site because it's like got everything going on and a really tight footprint. And you look at it originally, you know, from the start, and you go, I don't know how you could possibly get a Senior Center in there. It does have some attraction though, because quite often, our Senior Centers are attached to community centers. And they might be 60,000 or, we've done one down on the Cape that's 110,000 square foot, gigantic community center. One in southern Maine, it's 68,000 square feet. So it's really common to put a good-sized Senior Center, and you already have the community center. So it's worth looking at whether there's a viability to that connection. So then it's a question of how do you connect it? We looked at many different options, and the one that we sort of settled on, unfortunately, removes the recreation, this is a sort of playground, that was a donated playground, so we'd have to relocate that at some location, but, and the footprint of the building can only be a two-story. This site doesn't really support a one-story building. But what the site does is offer some, by putting the building there, you get to take advantage of this parking that's not quite so heavily used during the day. We could add another, there's already a road sort of begun off of Dillingham Avenue, we could add a road there, we could put overflow parking that would be useful for the community center and for ballgames. And if you really needed more parking, it's possible to, it's hard to explain. This site slopes down here, so if you imagine this site sloping down and you put a flat plane over it, you can come in without a ramp and get into the lower level parking here, and you could come in, drop seniors here, and come in the upper level of that garage without a ramp. So it's actually quite efficient as a parking structure, and it would again support some of the other activities on the site. So, you know, the architects look at the, like problems. So this site has some problems, and it's, there's some interesting opportunities to maybe continue looking at this for how you can begin to create, you know, you come in here, there's a police station, there's a parking lot, it just sort of goes all over the place. Okay, what were the community comments to this? This intersection's a difficult intersection to come in and come out of, and hence, we created a secondary road. Some folks felt that even that was difficult to get out of. Do you relocate this intersection down to here, so it's away from this road and maybe less congestion? That might be an option. But I think the main concern for this site was traffic and access. Couple people have mentioned to me during the meetings and after the meetings that, you know, for seniors, the, it's great to connect to Gus Canty, but there is a fee issue of using that building, so it may not be, may not be as popular to certain folks as it was as an idea to us. Couple people have mentioned that this site is sort of in the center of the population base, not the center of the town as a whole, but more people are on the southern end of the town, and so there is an advantage to this site in terms of just passenger miles, and there's some public transportation, there's some opportunities for bike access, pedestrian access. So while their traffic and access was seen as a problem, some other folks said, well, there's some opportunities here. So I wouldn't say people jumped out of their seats on this option, but there was some plus and minus to this particular site. Okay, so now we get to the high school, and the high school is just, you know, a wonderful opportunity. And we sort of identified, and there could be more, but we identified four opportunities on the high school property. So here you have the farm stand. The first site was this little nook with the softball field. They're not in any order of preference, but this is coming, assuming that most people come from the south, it was nice because you could get to that site before you had to pass the entry and exits to the high school, so just the traffic peeled off a little bit better on that particular site. Two is the lacrosse field down here, and that was mentioned by a member of the planning board for us to look at, because there's an existing construction road here, and there's an existing parking lot there that, albeit you lose a beautiful field, there is some infrastructure there that's. Three is the site north of the tennis courts, and the sewage pump station is right here, so that would also occupy a beautiful playing field. And then fourth, originally was discounted, because as you'll see on the drawings, we were, we thought the only reasonable way to get to it was off of Old Campus Drive, which is a private road, and that wouldn't be popular, but we've, some folks have suggested other ways of getting to that site, so I'll show you that one quickly. Okay, this is the one, here's the farm stand, you come in, the ball field. Most of these remove a recreation asset, and that asset would be replaced somewhere, we're not sure where it is. But in all these options, when we're taking a field out of commission, the intent is, as part of the project, to replace that field. The first option was to put the building fronting on Gifford Street Extension, you'd come in, drop off, park, and then there would be an exitway as well for emergency access, et cetera. So you can get 150 spaces, the building's here, the building doesn't really participate in the campus. Option two, put the building on the campus side, so it began to define a space here with the backside of the gym, define this access to the track. A lot of seniors are interested in using the track, and I know that that can be a controversial issue, because during the day, many high schools don't allow public use of the track facilities, and I believe that's true here as well. But this is a second option of using this site, and they both work quite nicely. And like I said, they get traffic in and out sort of before the main driveways to the school. Two is this lacrosse field, soccer field, practice field, the big crowd out there tonight, you know, it's a popular asset for sure. You can get a one or a two-story building on that site, beautiful parking, come in, overflow parking, get out. It's a very nice circulation, very diagrammatic. This parking in the afternoons could support the field's use. Right now, I know people are parking on the road when there's an evening practice and that, so there's some synergy. So there's some synergy to this opportunity. There's a lot of discussion and consternation about this turn because again, coming out and making a left turn on a sort of road that's heavily traveled, that can be a concern for seniors. So that was a consideration of that particular site.
Joel?
Yep.
Does the opportunity exist to the right of the parking? I mean, going over to the extension by the lights? Is it a possibility to come, have an exit road right in there?
Right here?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back to DPW that what we tried to do is keep the driveway access here where it's already been approved. You don't want to have a driveway too close to a traffic light. Usually we like to be 200 feet away, but we can do some more work with the DPW on that. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
This traffic light's actually a wonderful opportunity because it does really control traffic and I think that that's, that signalized intersection really appealed to a lot of folks that were in the first two forums that we were at. Site three, you have the pump station, the tennis courts, this field hockey field. Put the building on the far side just to get some separation from the tennis in the summertime so that if windows are open, you can still coexist. You, like I said, you probably don't need 150 spaces here because overflow parking on special events could probably use some of this space. So there's some synergy on these sites, but again, we wanted to show the worst case condition. You know, this is nice because getting to the pump station is relatively easy and that's a workable site. You know, one of the issues in replacing the field is it's not quite that simple to just plant a field. Replacing the field probably takes 18 to 24 months to construct it, get the grass to grow, let it grow for a season before you get in and ruin the grass with the teams. I mentioned we had a site up here and we sort of discarded it and it, it's hard to see, but you can see these lines. Each one of these lines represents a two-foot change in grade. It's really hard to believe until you get up on Old Campus Road and you look over here that there's a 35-foot drop from the road to this hole here. It's really surprising. So this is obviously the remnants of a glacial event. There's a kettle hole, a kettle hole. There's quite a bit of topography. And you look at those and you say, there's going to be a vernal pond too. And actually, there's not. So this checked out for habitat, it checked out for conservation, checked out on all the things that you would look at to typically find that a site's not workable. And there was a small ridge here that you could actually, between two ravines, that you could actually put a building in the parking in. So the question is, could you relocate the driveway and bring the parking, I mean, the driveway either this way or down here below the field? And that had been mentioned to us as maybe an option because it's not free to replace a ball field. So in phase two, we should probably study the replacement cost of the ball field versus the cost of an access road and see if this is at all a viable site. I think some of the other issues are, some seniors at least didn't like the building being like in the woods and having no visibility. Where you get the building here or even here on the road, there's a sense that it's visible, it's more open, it's not secluded, it's more of a public building. There's a lot of discussion about having the building be more visible than less visible. Okay, so the conclusion of all this is, it's a little bit arbitrary. There's, you know, 24 separate factors, each one has several, so when you're all done, there are 35 ways to do it. And somebody has to go through, and we've done this a number of times, and we ranked the sites on each factor. And I know it's not fair to rank the site because, you know, one issue is going to be like site area, if it's not big enough, you can't use the site. That's a lot different than water table. So they don't really, in the next phase, they're not all going to have the same values. But it's interesting to look at it that way because you can rank the sites, and I won't go through the TDM, which I did with the seniors who were at the last meeting, but the high school, if you're, one is the best. So the lowest score wins. The high school sites were clearly the low, the best sites, although T-Ticket was right there and Gus Canty wasn't much far behind. Now again, it's like this ranked pretty well, but I think a lot of seniors were saying, there's no way we're going to support a site if the traffic is that difficult, if you can't mitigate the traffic. So even though they might measure out the same, there could be some overriding problem on that site. But you can see Brick Hill Road just loses out. It's really a negative, negative site. If you do it the other way around, the most passing scores, the high school wins and the other two sites are right behind there in Brick Hill. And then the other way is you just say, one and two is a pass and three and four is a fail. And, you know, Brick Hill just failed on so many accounts. It had 15 failing grades out of 24. So I think that we got confident at the end of this that this was not a really good option. But at the end of it, you know, there's still some viability to these three. So what we've been presenting this and looking to whittle it down, which we haven't at this time.
Joel, could you, I'm not sure if you or Jim, you had two forums about two weeks ago. I unfortunately was not able to go to those. Maybe somebody could give us a sense of the reaction?
I'll step up. My view was that it was really overwhelmingly in favor of the high school for primarily, I would say really a fear of dealing with traffic on the other sites. And also a lot of people felt like it was central and it was a real magnet to the intergenerational concept. People felt that they had a lot to give and that maybe this school would need what they had to give.
The one thing they did not even bring up though, was the traffic and conflict between school buses and seniors. That there would be twice a day where you really would not want to have senior events scheduled because it's a very busy time to come into a school property.
And if you look at it, actually the kids are in school before the senior center opens and our programming in the afternoon occurs prior to the kids getting out of school. So that shouldn't be an issue.
Great. So, you know, I mean, one way to look at it is there are two sites at the high school that we keep studying. I've been trying to keep one other site up in the air so that we have some viable fallback For some reason, the high school site turns out not to be viable. So of those, I think, my feeling is there was a lot of negative reaction about T-Ticket from the traffic, more so than at Gus Canty, which surprised me. More people complained about traffic here than here, so.
So, so just if I can take a step back. So the school committee talked about this whole thing about a year ago when there was something like 60 sites. And our feeling at that time, we didn't take a formal vote on it, but our feeling at that time was that we were very open to any use of any of the school properties. As long as, I think the wording was, we were made whole, you know? Anything that was usurped would be replaced. And that's been confirmed and so forth. So I think, now I'll just editorialize, I would love to see us be able to put a win-win situation together here. I think it's a real opportunity for the school to give something back to the senior citizens in town. We ask a lot of the senior citizens in town and I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity for us to kind of extend back out to them and offer things. I'm totally intrigued by what we might be able to do at the high school site, just in terms of, I mean, this building is a phenomenal building and it has so much to offer. We use it for 182 days and so forth. It leaves a lot of time that this building could be used. We've got wonderful athletic facilities, music rooms, art room, a beautiful auditorium, this library, computer labs, graphics labs and everything else. I'd love to be able to see what we could do if the senior center was located close enough that we could actually start to build a partnership. And I think that there would be a tremendous win-win here. I'm not sure how we want to do this. I can recognize people or we can, Joel, I think a lot of questions to you, so maybe you could just point to people and take it from there.
Great.
The playing fields you said might take two years to replace? That's scary to me. What would those, where would they play in the meantime?
Right, so you would have to phase your, it would probably delay the construction of the senior center. And this, we've just had preliminary discussions, actually via email with the athletic director on this topic. So you'd have to find a site for the replacement field, put it in, and then it needs one full year for the grass to take hold before you want to play on it. So assuming that it takes one spring season to get the field built, then the next season it's growing and then you could start the senior center on the site. So it would delay the senior center by a couple of years.
They can't, I don't, not clear why they can't be simultaneously. Oh, because there'd be, I've never.
Well, I think the one option at the high school, which I wasn't sure is, you know, is that site maybe a little bit less used than some of the others? Is that something that we?
Well, the only comment I have, they can't, they don't necessarily have to be in sequence, but they could be phased. Remember the design, we don't have design funding, the design takes eight, nine months just to get through a full construction design of a building of this magnitude. So there's, there is time available, it's just when those decisions get made. But it does take two years for a field to grow in.
And are they looking at fields on the high school land or at another site altogether?
I think that's to be determined where, I know there's a master plan for the, some fields to go back here and I don't know how far that's gone, but we just, we've gotten a copy of that drawing. So I would think that this field ideally would be on this site. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, that kind of segues into my question was, if you use the site two location, does the topography, you mentioned the topography between four and three up there as being a bit challenging up on the, on the higher side of that chart. Does it lend itself to just immediately left of site three, that you could just extend that field out to put the lacrosse field there?
Yeah. Yep.
Could I, could I take you back in history? You were the architect for the pool rink group?
Yep.
And then about a year later, we added the senior center on to make it a pool rink senior center complex and I was on that committee. Sam, you were on that partially, right?
Well, I was chairman at the time, so I was involved, but only to an extent.
So one of the things, one of the sites that that group was looking at was three expanded.
Right.
And the make whole was what was called the Peterson parcel that was 19, 18 or 19 acres out behind the high school. That would become where we would put some fields in to, you know, sort of pay us back for turning over a big chunk, the lacrosse, girls' lacrosse and field hockey field and into, into zone four. But there were so many issues with that back parcel because there was no electricity out there, there'd have to be a road put in, the topography was difficult. And is that part of the master plan that you're talking about right now? Is that the area?
Well, the area that I had seen was right behind the high school and that was large enough for a good sized field.
That's, that's not the same.
It's not the same.
The Peterson parcel is further west, it's out in that area there. And there were restrictions that would actually require a vote of the state legislature to withdraw or mitigate in some way.
But the discussion when it was this triplex was that it was a real benefit to be near the high school, which at that point hadn't been renovated, the renovation hadn't been finished. And so there was this real campus feeling about it. And I hark back to that as why the high school site would be, in my mind, the perfect, which site of the four, I'm not sure. But as close as you could get to the high school to have it truly be this intergenerational complex, that's to me is the win-win. But four in the woods, pretty, but I don't think the seniors want to be out in left field or beyond left field.
It's a really interesting comment because that was what we were sort of shooting at site one was the ability to link the building to the school building and to see if that was an opportunity. You know, I don't know if there's other opportunities in here, but we could look at that.
For site one, you had mentioned it would be advantageous from traffic point of view to have it before the high school. I would actually think the exact opposite.
Okay.
I think it'd be better to have the seniors driving once the kids and buses pull off. Where they're doing their pulling into a driveway and other driveway would be a less traveled road than having them pull into a busier road. And I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding, if you could, I'm trying, I don't understand why it's better to have that from a traffic point of view.
Well, our assumption is most people will come from Brick Hill or from the south. The majority of travel will be in this direction.
For both seniors and students?
Well, for seniors. And I assume students.
Right. And all traffic.
Yeah, and so we thought it was just easier to have them get in and get out without having to deal with kids going in and out at lunchtime or other things at those paths.
But they'll be pulling out into a busier road there than if they were up by the tennis court, which would be, is a fairly, is a much quieter road.
Where everybody's going to take a right pretty much when they exit.
Yep.
And, you know, we make a lot of jokes, Nancy Left Turn Hayward got up with each site and talked about the difficulty of getting there without making left turns. But UPS has their trucks programmed to avoid left turns because they're the time that you run into most accidents. So I don't want to put that on seniors. I want to put it on UPS drivers too.
So I want to piggyback on what Doug was just asking because if you look at it from the school perspective, I might prefer that the seniors get off the road before they're going by the school where students are coming in and out.
That was the point I was trying to make.
Okay. Kelly, you had a question?
I did. I'm wondering about any progress on the aquatic center? Is that, is that getting anywhere? And if so, is it going to be out this way? Because I know there's supposed to be a big senior component with that.
Which aquatic center?
Well, I had heard that it was actually getting.
There has been a lot of work actually being done with the aquatic center. But that's kind of in limbo at the moment because the site that they're looking at is the 31 acres under 151, which belongs to Valley Need. But Valley Need is very interested in working with everyone on it. So that's kind of the focus right now at the aquatic center.
May I add to that? There's a second group, Falmouth Wants a Y, which.
Falmouth Wants a Y? Oh, right.
Which had, I believe, mentioned some kind of relationship with the schools or as a possibility, school land.
I was just curious more about whether or not, I had heard that there was some discussion about land for that aquatic center and that it would be out this way somewhere. So it's already, I just want to make sure we're thoughtful about.
The other, the other issue that obviously comes up is that there's another group in town pushing an all-purpose athletic field, which the school committee voted to support last year. And I'm not quite sure where that, where their thoughts were. I think it was where you were thinking the fields would be relocated. I think it was where you were thinking the, the fields would be relocated. And I don't know what the impact, you know, if that were to go through, what impact that would then have on the need to relocate a field and all those kinds of things.
Just a quick comment, unrelated, the aquatics issue. We have a working group that's, will be holding a workshop on the 29th of this month at the Herman Foundation Meeting Room. It's called the Olympic Village Concept Study, and the stakeholders include the YMCA and the Aquatics Center. But that, those are really very independent processes that are going on without the town's involvement directly at this time.
Are we vying for the Olympics in Falmouth?
It's just an energy.
Could we go back and talk about the administration building and start to explain some of the negatives? I do think the biggest one, of course, is the traffic. But I think there could also be traffic signals that everyone can follow, and I think that that could be. But I still go back to the administration building and thinking that there's not as much that we have to replace there as far as the land is concerned. Of course, the employees will have to be taken care of. But it seems each time we were saying a certain area, there was another answer to that. I mean, as I'm sitting here listening, there was a positive and then there wasn't. But I would like to go back and just hear this group talk about the administration and that site. No one wants to talk about that site.
Well, in the community meeting, it was, it was overwhelming, the opinion of people expressing negative comments.
I agree with Rebecca. I'd love to hear what the school committee feels on that.
On that site?
Yeah.
Well, we need a place to put 29 employees plus plus. And, and as well, it's an historical building, so that is going to have to be taken into consideration. And as well, there's another loss of a field. Now, whether we can go somewhere else with our administration, there is a question. There may be room here at the high school, but there is a question in regards to, we all remember our former superintendent, Mark Duplee, mentioning at various times that because of the money from MSBA, there were restrictions in regards to whether we'd be able to move the administration here. That's an unanswered question.
I just want to weigh that. I just want to weigh moving the staff or all of this issue with the traffic and the entrance and the fields.
I do think we need to be careful. So I think one of the, I mean, one of the things, so, I mean, Nancy, I think, has looked at the whole issue of removing the administrative personnel, and I don't think that there's room here at the high school. So we would be looking at, you know, building another building. I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here trying to figure out, you know, and make sure that I'm, which role am I here? You know, as a school committee person, I'm just looking at, how does this affect the schools? As, quite frankly, a senior citizen in the town, I'm thinking like, where's the best place and so forth. So I, from a school committee perspective, I don't have any issues whatsoever with the school administration site. If the town were to make that as a decision and we took care of the administrative personnel that are there in some way, I don't particularly care.
I think an awkward position would be if we put the senior center at the high school and three years later, the school committee says, you know, we're done with the administration building, we're going to abandon the use of it. That would be a huge, I think that would not go well with the town, and that would be a mistake. And I know that in the past, the school committee has thought about, is it a building we want to have the school department continue to be maintaining? You know, as a historic building, it is a building that the town at some point, with the school department or the town itself, is going to have to put some money in to restore. That we are responsible for owning the building and maintaining it. And any dollar figure that puts towards that historical restoration, I almost subtract from the renovation because somebody's going to have to do it. We're going to have to foot that bill one way or the other. So I would just want to make sure we aren't saying, yep, no, no now, but two years now? Yep, actually, we are done with it.
I'm wondering if the traffic studies took into consideration other options for solving, other than putting in two entrances? Was there anything else that was considered, a light or a rotary or any, was there any other solution that was considered?
Well, there was some discussion of signalizing areas.
That really is something that would happen in the next phase of study, a deeper study of what the real traffic alternatives are. What I want to just recognize, I think the conversation is really important to have. Some of my initial comments, which I wasn't planning to make, were that we need to be prepared, that we're not the decision makers. Tell meeting's the decision maker, and then the electorate is the decision maker. So you never know what's going to happen with these sites. We need to be very careful to make sure that we don't discard options prematurely, that we keep them all actively in play until the decisions are made. And I think we did that really well with the working group. There are sites that are, were studied with the working group that if, if we found that these top sites are not ideal, we go back and take a look at those. We've been very careful, I think, to make sure that options remain available. One of the things I'd be interested in, we haven't had any discourse about, is this option here of maintaining the school administration in the school administration building and using the site for senior centers as well. I don't know if that has any negative conflicts or concerns.
So, so one of the issues there, obviously, is you'd replace, that field would be taken out. That, that is, is not a field that's used by school, the schools. So, so from a school committee perspective, I don't have an issue with you doing that, but it is a recreation field in the town, and so that's, I think, a different discussion, it's a discussion with somebody else. I also want to go back to Doug's comment. I mean, I don't think there's anybody here, sitting here, that says, no, you can't use the school administration building today because of whatever, and then we come back. I mean, if, if, as I said, just my personally, if, if the town, if the selectmen came and said, we want to use the school administration building, we're going to relocate the administrative staff, I don't particularly have a problem with that. You want to jump in on that?
Absolutely. And I don't have a problem either. However, I would ask that you just consider the way the central office runs and how I work with my staff every day in the departments that are there. So they would still have to be centralized wherever we were moved to. The 29 people would need to be moved together. I don't see that splitting up central office would be beneficial to what we do every day. So I'd ask that you consider that. The other piece that, in just hearing conversations about the central office staff being moved to the high school and that the high school isn't being used to capacity, that's really not an accurate perception because you can talk about numbers, but the issue for me is programming and trying to create and maintain a comprehensive high school. So when you look at how we do use our space here, every single space is being used at Falmouth High School. So from what the research that I have done with both the building manager and with Mary Gans and with Joe Driscoll prior to Mary Gans, there is not room for us to come in and take over enough space for, for 29 people. The other, there are other issues with that in terms of some construction would have to be done at the high school. We'd have to have our own entrance, we'd have to have our own parking, and, and so I don't see us, the central office, moving to Falmouth High School as a viable option. Moving somewhere else together because the decision comes from the town that they would like to take the administration building, I don't have an issue with that. But I would want us to be kept together, and I don't see us moving to Falmouth High School.
Can I just push on one point on there? And whatever the answer you give, I'm going to walk away and say, great. Is it the 29 in entirety or is there any possibility of, 16 of them need to go, but, or 20?
I've looked at that. I've looked at that, and I have, I actually, what I did is I broke it down by department, and I looked at the different departments and the, the chair of the department and the staff that goes with that department. We have moved early education and care out of the admin building because she primarily is located at the East Falmouth School, and she was very willing to do that, but she does come under pupil personnel, and she was somebody we could move. But I have looked at it honestly, several different ways. And I.
It's the entirety.
I, I could not really break them up.
So let me just piggyback on something you said. So you said, we couldn't, we couldn't move the administration to the high school.
Right.
We could move the administration to a new facility on the high school grounds.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
Absolutely.
And Nancy, just one more follow-up. What about a comprehensive review of all the school buildings in the sense of, I'm not sure how the population is, but is there, have you had a chance to look at, for example, say Lawrence? I mean, I know obviously the window project is going on, but if there was a feeling in the town to, you know, however, move one of the grades to another building, or, or is there space in another school? I'm just thinking bigger.
Not for the entire central office staff, if that's what you're asking. Is that, am I?
Yes, like say, if you took a whole grade, moved it to a different school, does that give you, whatever, 27 seats?
We looked at that when we thought about, we had a demographics committee years ago, and we looked at moving the eighth grade to the high school.
About three years ago.
And that, we didn't have the space to do that at Falmouth High School, to move the eighth graders over. If you moved a grade out, could we potentially move into another building? Yes, but I'm not sure that we have space in any building right now to move a grade to another building.
Thank you.
We did look at the reconfiguration of grades.
Yes.
We did a demographic study, and it, it came up with status quo.
Right, thank you.
I wanted to come back to Doug's question about the condition of the current school administration building, because while I was on the school committee, the school system took very good care of that building and even used some C P C money to actually do some restoration work. I mean, Pat Murphy, what's the condition of that building? Is it in need of some significant renovation?
It's, it's an old building, obviously, but you're right. It did go through some renovation within the last decade or so that has brought it up, maybe longer, brought it up to speed. But it is an old building, so it's, old buildings do tend to have problems. But there's nothing urgent about it in terms of facility maintenance right now.
I don't know that it was explained when we were talking about the high school, about the sewer system, that it has to be connected, and, and the locations at the high school. Now, I know that there would be sewer system if it were the administration building, but what do you do? Is there a sewer system that's coming in, too? There is.
There's a pump station here, so you'd really want to get to the pump station, and then it would, so you'd either have to come from here up to there or from these sites to that location. Now, the pump station has adequate, adequate capacity. From what we've learned from TPW, it's about 25% of capacity today. So you could add this building and there's still growth.
John?
If I may, Ron, Nancy and Ellen addressed quite eloquently the school committee, the building usage side, but to follow up on your question, Rebecca, as far as what would be some of the other pros and cons of that. That site is just from a, the senior center usage, compared to like the Gus Candy location or the high school, you wouldn't get any of the synergies of the other usage of the, of the buildings. And another dynamic, in addition to the traffic, and I'm not sure if the sewage that you mentioned, will it address this or not, but that area down at the end of Sandwich Road always floods as well pretty significantly.
That's true.
So that would be another thing that we'd have.
The Aquatics Center.
And just a question on, had we done any traffic studies on when the high school was coming and going to that intersection there of the, of how much of the traffic is on Gifford and how much is on Brick Hill? Because my, my point being is the Site Two section there, theoretically, the senior center individuals could go in and out of Site Two and, and never interact with anybody on the traffic.
Right. The, this traffic study, the detailed traffic studies, next phase, the concern here was exiting out and going this way, so making that left turn.
Right.
That was the seniors' concern on that site.
Joe or Jim, just from the perspective of the programs at the senior center, what you could envision future programs being, I mean, given that you've got 1,000 kids coming into this building, you know, at 7:30 in the morning and leaving 2:00 in the afternoon and so forth, how does that impact what you could do?
Actually, it wouldn't because we would schedule the programming accordingly. You would be in school before we would even open up. You're in school at 7 o'clock, we don't open up until 8 o'clock. Our afternoon activities wouldn't start until noon time or 1 o'clock, you get out of school after 2 o'clock. So I don't see the crossing of interaction there.
How late would your activity, would they have night activities?
We would hope so, with that programming right now.
Well, I was going to, I was going to add to your list of considerations. I'm also on the Recreation Committee for the town, which operates out of the Gus Candy Center. And maybe you've looked at this, but during the summer, even if you put additional parking spaces in with the Commodores games and the programs they've got going there, you'd have a really tough time doing nighttime things in that area. I mean, even right now, if you go to a Commodores game, that parking lot is totally full, you have to park somewhere else.
And the goal would be to start to have nighttime activities because, of course, with the baby boomer generation, you want to start to offer the programming that they would be interested in.
Well, my point would be, I think that, that you'd have a lot of trouble with parking on the Candy Center, even if you added the additional spaces. You could find the recreation people as well as the Commodore attending people, especially during the summer, flowing into those spaces, and you'd probably still have a real parking problem. I don't know that you could fix that, if you're going to do nighttime stuff.
You mentioned that there were seven sites that were at the public forums, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not educated about what happened there. What are the other three of those?
The, the seven sites were evaluated before the final four. So the seven sites were the previous list, and the additional three sites, if I remember correctly, was the T Ticket School was one, the Steam, no.
Gifford Street Steamship.
The Steamship Authority Parking Lot, right down the road here. And, so help me out over here, working group.
It was the most fun.
It was the most fun, okay. So there was a couple, and we visited, we actually had a tour of the schools, and we were very happy that you allowed us to do that. And, you know, it was clear to us that a couple of those facilities is just, just overwhelming for, for our use, and certainly, it's, you're not at a point to consolidate schools or do any of that. But we were just doing our due diligence to, you know, to take a look at, at all those facilities. And I just would like to add one other thing, Alan, is that, you know, the Falmouth came very close to getting a senior center back about 10 years ago. And, you know, we are getting very close to having another opportunity to have this happen, and we're really hoping that, you know, that everything can be aligned so that we can do this over the next few town meetings in November, maybe in, in some, in April. It's really important that we bring a project forward that has community support. You know, that's the whole point of doing these community forums, is to find out really what the community wants and what they're supporting. So that I would hope as this process goes forward and the decision makers, you know, really get down to brass tacks, that they take that into account, that this is really our chance. The senior center's been in the queue for a long time. This is our opportunity to get this building built. Let's bring to town meeting and to the voters a project that they're really enthusiastic about. And I think that's really important because we can't really afford to, to miss this opportunity again.
Can I just add, add a comment? That the schools have been encouraged last year, and it's coming forward again, to look at start and stop times and how we can adjust that for adolescence and, and brain development. So I just want to throw that out as, as a caution in that, in looking forward and making sure that, and I agree with you, we want to do this, we want to do it well, and we want community support. I just know that I'm going to be asked to look at start and stop times from K to 12 again. So I just put it out there in case, you know, we do, as a committee, change times.
Right.
And that would impact Falmouth High School. So I just want to put that up.
And Nancy, specifically, isn't it that the older kids would be better off starting at eight rather than seven? So the conflict would be the eight?
That's the only thing I, I throw out as a caution, and I don't think it's anything that. anything that we, we can't work through if, if the high school site were, were the one. I just want to make sure that we-
Yeah.
Try to anticipate anything.
Yeah, anything could be worked with. It's all about programming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Sam?
Yeah, I wanted to throw out, in terms of the timing of replacing fields, I mean, the synthetic turf field could shorten that time considerably, and it solves a number of problems. I know it was targeted that girls hockey, field hockey, for instance, could easily play on that field, would be a superior surface for their purposes. So, I don't think we should throw that as, as a possibility. You know, Walters mentioned the crunch at the rec center. I know that they're happy, they would be happy to see the football program moved to a campus, I mean, to the, the high school campus. And as I recall, where they proposed to put it was actually right next to the track on an existing, and they were talking about creating a, a practice field on the side of that as well. So, it really is in spaces already somewhat cleared and flat. So, I think it could very well fit into removing a field in order to cite senior center and shorten up the time that would be required to actually come up with a replacement field and one that's more durable and doesn't have to, you know, be laid up for periods of time to recover from overuse.
The danger I have with that idea is the voters did vote against that, and to have something that voters voted against it tied into this project worries me that we're going to lose the opportunity to get the-
Well, let me just add to that-
But it solves your problems.
I know.
Then in my neighborhood, the people that told me they voted against the synthetic were telling me they thought the senior center should come first, and they considered it to be a question of whose turn is it to, to actually get? To me, this would be a kind of a win-win. We need a site for the senior center, we need to replace a ball field. This is a way of doing it in a way that minimizes the impact and also solves some other problems in town, like the problems that we have at the rec center with multiple uses of the baseball field area. So, I, I don't think you should throw it out based on that particular referendum vote. I, I think as part of a senior center development, I think it'll have a much more attractive opportunity. Plus, if you look around us, there's synthetic fields going in on all the high schools here on Cape Cod, and we're going to be the only ones with a natural turf field that's kind of cruddy, quite honestly, after you use it for half a season, so.
If nothing else, I would appreciate the fact that those plans be introduced, even taken into consideration, even if it's not something now.
Yeah.
We don't want to lose that opportunity even down the road.
Just for the record, the plan that Joel has is the-
Is that one?
Yes.
Can I say one more thing?
The surf, the turf?
Yes.
That there were, there was a commitment of about $750,000 from outside sources toward that synthetic surf, synthetic field that I assume probably would become available, should such an effort be included as part of the senior selection.
I just have a quick question. Have we spoke with Kathleen Burke about how she feels about synthetic turf?
She loves them.
She was, fair enough. It's before my time, just catching up, sorry.
I just want to comment that in this process, we have been in touch with the school department on multiple levels. We reached out to Joe Driscoll, Mary Gans, to Kathleen Burke prior to this discussion as part of the work that Joel did, so we haven't left you out at all. This is really just a-
Oh, I wasn't suggesting that anybody was leaving out. I was just wanted to make sure that, this was the first time I was hearing of artificial turf, synthetic turf. Forgive me, I'm late to this party.
No, no. Welcome.
So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, Kathleen was on board, in favor, had an opinion, what have you.
She's, I, she's very supportive of the turf, and I can tell you that. There's one other sort of project going on that, that may take some legs. The athletic director's been working with the Recreation Director and the Park Superintendent, and has a proposal for the CPC that may or may not get funded to analyze the recreational fields in town and looking at whether the turf field is really a solution to some of the other field issues. We don't know whether that will be something that moves forward this fall or not, but it's something that they're working collaboratively on, looking at the field use issues, which is a real positive.
Okay. So, the next step, as I understand it, is the selectmen will recommend, will make a decision on two sites?
Two, or there is a potential that it can be kind of like two and a half sites, that we might be able to make it into three if we need to, partly because some of these sites, you know, for instance, the, if there's the high school site, whether three and two are both considered one site or not. And so, you know, if you look at the numbers up there, and I think there is a little bit of flexibility to say, "Yep, we like the high school, but we want to look at these two options, but at the same time, we still want to have another place to look at geographically because we want to really make sure we have enough apples to compare to each other."
So, what more, if anything, do you need from the school committee?
I think this has been extremely useful and helpful, I'm sure, for Joel and for our board in helping us make a decision, so.
Is there any need for a vote at all? No?
Any more questions from the school committee? Issues, concerns? Judy?
Just one comment. I think traffic is the driver on selecting a site, and I work in Woods Hole, and the only time that all six of the institutions down there came together to discuss an issue was about traffic and parking. So, I think that it's, it's going to enter, it's going to drive the choice of a site. So, I would hope traffic studies were precise and fair.
And accurate.
And accurate.
And that's one reason why the idea of comparing either the Gus Candy or to the high school means you're really going to have very different traffic stays done in Phase Two. If we're just looking at the high school and don't compare the other ones, we don't have, it's not anything to compare to, it's going to be the same traffic issues at that site, and is that good or bad? And without the in-depth study from Phase Two, I think that's the reason why to consider the other options.
So, it'd be better traffic studies than the Marriott, as presented?
Well, actually, it'd be a traffic study.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, is there anything more that you need from us?
Big question?
Is there anything more that you need from us?
Only if, if there is anyone that, anyone from the school committee that has any, any real objection to any of the things that, that, any of the sites that Joel has, has shown, put up there. If there's anything out there that just stands out to you and says, you know, that absolutely couldn't happen.
We act as a body. Yes?
Yes.
As opposed to any individual. Yeah.
But I think this is, I mean, the purpose of this meeting is to express concerns. So, I think what Jim's really-
I think it's a fair question.
I think what Jim's really looking for is that when we go to town meeting and we present our vote, that we're not then hearing from either this group or other groups saying, "Yeah, we really don't like that idea." Say, "Now, tell us now. Tell us now you don't like the idea, because we'll work with it," as opposed to finding out later, and we'd really much rather have that information and not be surprised by it.
Thank you, Doug.
Nancy?
Can I just make a, a positive comment in terms of the educational piece? I would love to see the senior site, this is just my own opinion, the senior center cited at Falmouth High School for, for educational purposes and for connecting the different generations, and I, I think that would just be amazing, regardless of traffic or anything else, I'm simply speaking educationally, and what, what from my perspective would be best for kids and for seniors.
On that point, Nancy, between three and one.
That's right. That's right. Which one?
Does three even work to accomplish what you're talking about, or does it need to be one or two? So, I mean, that they're actually physically close enough? I mean, I assume it's going to be that these kids are going to the senior center, not the seniors are coming up to the school.
Well, you have the whole, you have the whole VIPS program.
I'm not sure.
You know? If it's, if there was up in four, I don't see that the seniors are going to be making a trek over to the school, but the kids could.
Good point. Piggybacking on what you said was the, whenever Jane, the art teacher, did the World War II Veterans thing, and the, the seniors came to the school and, for hours and talked and everything, that, that's what I was going to say, instead of concern, that philosophy was, it was just reverberated forever, so I guess one, because that's closest to it.
Yeah, I guess that's the way I'd answer your question, Doug. You know, closer is going to be better.
Okay.
And even, even on the one site, to, you know, to flip the, flip the building so it's closer to the, the, the campus than out to the road, just kind of an intuitive thing that I have, the closer you are, the more cooperation, the more interaction you're going to get.
On the flip side, do you think that the seniors are going to be intimidated by the high school kids?
Absolutely not. We already actually do internships. We have students come to the senior center already. I think with the younger kids, would be more programming, but I think more what they look for with the seniors is the high school age bracket.
If I could just say one more thing about the high school campus versus the administration building, I think that we need to listen to the seniors when they tell us that they're fearful, that they're fearful of the traffic pattern there, whereas I feel like there's more wiggle room, if you will, at the high school location as opposed to the administration building location. But we need to listen to them and hear their concerns.
I'm sorry, keep raising my hand, but could you just say a little bit about your turf, the turf field proposal that Heather said you were?
Well, we, we've got a-
Were you aware, did you meet with any of the group who had tried to bring that forth in Falmouth?
Down the draw and showed the master plan of a large turf field back here behind the high school.
And you were on board with that?
No, I just received that. Just received the information.
We haven't done anything more with it. We just received that information.
And that would, that wouldn't be part of any of the work that Joel's involved in right now.
But that's certainly going to be in Phase Two.
Oh, yeah, it could, well, Phase Three probably.
I mean, having, having been an athletic director, I can, I can tell you that having a field on-site as opposed to have to travel downtown is a plus for the school, and the turf, maintenance-wise, is a tremendous money saver, and it doesn't have all the liabilities it used to on injuries. So, I can see where the athletic director would want that. I think it would be good for the school to have it on-site as opposed to having it off-site. So, hopefully, Doug, somewhere down the road, that's something that could get approved.
I guess I would, I would much rather really be focusing on the best senior site. And that could be a, a plus that's weighed in there, but I, I wouldn't want to have it just become a major focus at all of the discussion.
Question over.
Yeah, I was going to ask if, if the turf field as a replacement field, it seems to me that it would only come into play if the senior center was located on Site Number Two. Is that correct?
Or Site One.
Well, it could be two or three. Site One's not that large, so I don't, we could look at it, but I think three and two are the prime.
The option would be if it were one, you might decide to move the softball field where two is, and then put the surf field, and in some ways, get actually bigger fields by that, by taking a smaller field as a one and creating two bigger fields out of that at the same time.
So, does the school committee want to wait the, the top two sites at that school?
I don't think, I don't think we're expected to have a vote tonight, and I don't-
Not, not a vote, just a consensus, Stan?
I think we've heard pretty much.
My, my read of the, the school committee is that there's a tremendous amount of support for the senior center. I think on a personal basis, I echo what Nancy says, I'd love to see it at the high school. I think we could do a lot of generational stuff, but if you chose to do it at the school administration building, I don't think we would have a problem with that either. So, in answer to your question, I, I don't think that you're in a position where if the selectmen choose one or both school sites, that you're going to get any resistance from us.
And I think what really much, very much what we want to do is choose a site and start building momentum positive, yet we're just finding all the positives for it and keep going in that direction.
I would, I would ask that, that when the next phase happens, I, I think that there should be represent, if, assuming that the school sites are chosen, that the schools are represented on those as part of that analysis so that issues can be raised.
I think that actually, next working group on this is the, the professionals, that after we choose the sites, it really is not as much in feasibility study, it's PH plus A that is going to be doing it.
Yeah, but I know, might note, though, I thought the process we had, this last go round was excellent, where we invited you in before the working group, before the public presentations, you had a chance to see them, we shared them with the school staff, the athletic director got a lot of feedback on that. I think we'd be happy to do that again.
And I think that's exactly the process we'd take.
Great. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion from my committee to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to return the school committee?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you very much.